...of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, in the visible with the verity and justice for all.
Okay, first thing that we do is to approve the agenda. Does anyone have any questions, changes, modifications to the agenda as presented?
No.
If not, I got most of our excited to approve the agenda. Second by Sean Ryan. There's no other comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Okay, the agenda passes by zero. First on the agenda, we have Chris Cabot. Give us an update on our lovely Main Street project and other plans to get it done on time.
Yes, thank you Mayor, members of the city council. I guess first thing I'd like to do, the item before us, we do want to talk about consideration of a contractor incentive, and I'll get into that a little later, but what I wanted to first mention is back before Christmas, we put together a general report and it kind of established a bid date, bid opening date for the project, and we brought that before the council at the first meeting of January. Since then, we've decided we need to postpone that. We're still waiting for final approval from MINDOT, we're expecting that this week. Legally, we could still have the bids at the time we wanted, but it leaves us too short of advertising time, we feel, for a project of this size. So, I had mentioned before that we might bump it to the March 6th date, and at this point, that is the date that we're focusing on. So, I did want to point out the schedule, kind of going forward, what we're anticipating. This is the schedule I have before you here. Again, there'll be some actions that you'll have coming up here that you'll want to think about, we'll be bringing them before you. Basically, there's going to be a cooperative agreement that's going to come before the city. MINDOT is going to be approving plans, and that'll then allow us to advertise for bids, and we're expecting that here literally this week, still posting of advertising for next week or beginning next week or so. There'll also be a cooperative agreement coming before you. It'll be reviewed by staff, the attorney. It's the agreement between MINDOT and the city, and we're expecting that that'll come before the city council at the February 18th meeting. And then that'll have to get signed and sent back to MINDOT, and then we will have bid opening on March 6th, and then we won't be able to award a contract until MINDOT has executed the agreement. It's gone back to them, they've signed, it's just a formality at that point, and again, we're expecting that to be an award on March 13th, which would allow us to basically, I'm sorry, allow us to award bids on, I'm sorry, March 16th, and then we'd be looking at a notice to proceed by early April and a contractor mobilizing soon after that. So again, early, early to mid-April will be the contractor mobilization. And that's kind of what we've always anticipated, although we expected to be a little bit earlier upfront on some of the plan approval, plan advertising, et cetera. But in the end, we're still kind of on the schedule that we had anticipated for starting.
So, Chris, is MINDOT here during the opening of its representative?
I'm guessing they'll probably have somebody just for their interest, but we, it is in charge, we're in charge of it, the city is the lead, and so the bid opening will be here, and we'll be hoping that bid opening.
So they don't have to approve anything?
Well, there's a process they go through, so we, they actually do have to, they call concurrents of award a bid. So we tabulate the bids, analyze and make sure everything is in order, review their subcontractors, et cetera, and we send it to their office of, Office of Civil Rights. So there may be some requirements they have because it's a federal job, and they'll basically say, yeah, we concur with the bid, go ahead and you're authorized to award. And that usually takes a matter of a few days, two, three days, and so we've allowed that in the schedule, et cetera.
Thank you.
Yep. So, going forward, that's generally what we're looking at. One of the items that we wanted, that's kind of come up since kind of the last stages was, there's been a lot of focus over this, in this whole time during the project about Main Street, Dojinki Festival, can some of the project be done? And we've always said, if we're not done in that first west half of the project by September, we've got bigger issues. But it, so we always felt that it was reasonable to expect that that work to be done, but there's a big difference between the project being significantly done versus being substantially done. And we felt for the project to be, the potential having the project, that west end of the project being used for Dojinki weekend, the project would need to be substantially complete. And there's been a lot of concerns about whether that's going to hinder the contractor, how you put liquidated damages on it, that drives up costs, there's a lot of concern by MINDOT as well as us of how much restriction do we put on the contractor to get done and make sure that that first stretch of the project is done for Dojinki weekend. And the section I'm talking about is again from Highway 21 on the west end up through First Avenue Southeast, so where the first roundabout would be built. Again, seems reasonable, a little ambitious, but certainly reasonable. So, we've had this discussions over the last year, you know, should we consider an incentive? How do we, how do we look at this? It never really took hold until I started having more conversations with MINDOT here a couple weeks ago. And MINDOT actually came back to the table and said, if the city wanted to consider an incentive, MINDOT would be willing to match the city, 50/50, up to $25,000 contribution from them, $25,000 contribution from the city, for a total incentive of $50,000 to be, have the project, that west end of the project substantially complete. It would essentially need to be done like prior to Labor Day, Labor Day in fact, prior to, almost prior to the 1st of September, which to allow Newpray Utilities to install lights, et cetera, leave enough time for that. So, I don't want to get into the details, but you know, you're at, maybe asking how does that work? That's the little calendar that I gave you here that shows kind of that first week of September and potentials, potential amounts and dates, dates the contractor could earn an incentive. And again, this is only an example, if we decide to do this, this would be something we'd work out in a little more detail with the MINDOT project manager as well. So, in essence, it really is a tool, and that's kind of what we're asking them to consider. Is this a tool that we maybe want to consider? It also shows, you know, the public and the business owners, that we're trying to encourage the contractor to at least focus on, you know, potential and how they manage the project to get that portion of the project done, basically prior to first part of September.
So, Chris, on this table here, is it kind of diminishing bonuses as dates start being ticked up?
Yeah. So in this example, basically, if they finished, essentially finished that last week of August, they would get a whole incentive. And I just showed three different examples of maybe how that would be done at different And again, and we showed it this way so that it left enough room after they would be completed, that it still gives enough wiggle room for Newpray Utilities to install lights. There's a lot of logistics involved. Some of that thing I would anticipate in talking to Bruce, that they'd be able to do a little bit ahead of time, but they really don't want to have the contractor in the way. They don't want anybody else doing work around that area while they're trying to install lights, get them wired, get them charged, et cetera. So, and a contractor may look at this and say, it's not worth my effort. $50,000 sounds like a lot of money, but when you look at what a contractor's probably burning in a day on a $10.89 million construction contract, it's probably just a carrot. And so, they would probably go into it early on thinking, well, we're going to see how things go, we're going to target this, and as they got partway through the summer, they probably say, you know, we're not going to worry, we're not going to focus on it, we're going to, we're going to get the work done, but they may not focus on trying to get this substantially complete prior to September. That takes away the pressure of extra costs, there are concerns about liquidated damages from intra-milestone, and it really just lets us focus on the end date. And the end date would be, again, substantial completion for basically October 31st.
Is there any penalty if they're not making substantial progress?
If they, well, it's all at the end, and so we, as we're approaching the substantial completion date, which would be October 31st, they would be, you know, we'd be working with them, notifying them ahead of time, you're not going to meet the date, liquidated damages are going to occur, you know, beginning of November 1st, whatever that may be. So yes, there's liquidated damages by the contract for us, but it would be just on the end date. We talked about maybe considering that for these intra-milestones, but really felt that was too restrictive on the contractor in that. We're better off to maybe go in, the city in the chamber is better to go into, look at Dojinki as Plan A is kind of look at an alternative site, and Plan B is, oh, it looks like they're going to be done in time, and we'll, Plan B will be, we'll go back to the original location or something like that.
Are the liquidated, I'm sorry, are the liquidated damages so, so much per day? You know, I've seen contracts where it's, you know, $10,000 a day.
Yeah, it's per day, and it's based on the size of the contract. I think it doesn't, I think it's, I think for contracts of the size, it's about $3,500 a day.
Okay.
And it's not, you know, liquidated damages have to be well documented, dates have to be well documented, and it's not always just a slam dunk, but it's always hanging there open their head.
Right, yeah, well, it's, it's nice to have a dollar amount in a contract as opposed to having somebody else try to lead that.
Yeah, and it's established by, we have to follow the kind of the MINDOT contracting requirements established by MINDOT specifications.
Thank you.
Well, Chris, you made it sound like this is almost irrelevant, I don't know, isn't there a progressive payment on this any of you?
Well, I'm not sure if I understand the question. So there'll be, obviously, there'll be earning as they go, but this is just to give them kind of a carrot or an incentive, literally, to focus their planning, their project management, their schedule on getting the project, that portion of the project substantially complete by the 1st of September. Again, they may decide later on that it involves too much overtime, too many other things to worry about, and they may just decide, we're not going to worry about it. But we wanted to put that schedule on them to determine that rather than us.
Chris, don't be vague, there might be work, couldn't be put it in the plans, that it's a requirement to get through that first roundabout and then give preferential treatment to the people that submitted those bids, to the contractors. I don't know how they're awarding, you know, how you rank that, but...
There is a method of contracting that you can do that, and in working with MINDOT and their Department of Innovative Contracting, we just felt it was, there was a lot of concerns that it was just going to bump up the cost a lot. So it kind of gets back to what's the value of, you know, of having that section of road done.
The next thing is, I guess for Mike, the $25,000, we have that in the budget or...
It would just end up being part of the total cost of the construction, and we would just pick that up under the city share of the project. The bigger question following up on what Chris was indicating is that we've had conversations with the chamber about an alternate location, and irrespective of whether it's able to come back downtown or not, it's my belief in our discussions, is that even if you hold it in the alternate location that we're talking about, there still is likely to be a significant number of residents and visitors that are likely to come downtown to visit the liquor establishments, whether we want them there or not. And so, as we talk about whether we should do this or not, part of the incentive a little bit is ultimately the safety of the downtown with crowds of unknown sizes that might find their way back downtown, even if the beer garden and the event and the food is held at an alternate location, they're still going to gravitate back downtown just because it's been that way for how many years. And so, the concern is, is in trying to look at doing this, that will it help us be able to take care of the safety of large numbers of people that might gravitate back to the downtown? The other side that he alluded to in Bruce Reimers from Utilities, he needs to get in by about the 1st of September in order for him to ensure that the lighting can be done on that segment, assuming the contractor does all of the things that he needs to do to run the conduit, get the wiring pulled, and the bases established, so that he can put in and basically set the light poles and wire them up. But he needs that kind of retime in order to make that work. So the action tonight is really whether you conceptually are willing to buy into the concept, and that we go back and try to work and continue the details to try to make it somewhat workable, whether it was new coming out of MINDOT or it was why we bring it back to you.
Chris, how confident are you of this starting construction time period, that we're going to receive a successful bid, and that we'll start April 6th as we're kind of pushing this back?
Fairly confident. I mean, again, the season, you know, by April, most contractors aren't starting. This is the type of job where, I mean, there wouldn't be much work happening right away in April, because mostly what's going to happen in April is going to be crossings under the railroad. They've got jack or de-sept surface crossings, five of them underneath the railroad, that's going to be the bulk of the work probably almost in that first month.
And your sense of the marketplace right now, you think will be in that right bidding area?
It's, it's hard to say. I mean, I've had two contractors call me that have heard about the project, you know, I basically just had to play them to the website, I can't, you know, give them any more information of what's public, but they definitely seem like they're interested in the contractors that are capable of doing these kind of projects, so...
We've mentioned Dojinki as the motivation for this, but I would just mention that there's other benefits for the business people just at the old one earlier, and more access, and also benefits to the community, and more free flow of traffic and safety earlier, so I'm supportive of that.
Chris, I have a question. When it goes out to bid, I know we talked through this process that contractor actually could be working on both ends if they wanted to. Is that something that they would be made aware of during the bid process?
I have written into the contract for that, and I think most contractors will look at it. For example, let me give you an example. First of all, there's a stretch of storm sewer that goes to Memorial Park that has to be done early on, so that's going to give the contractor enough reason to say, you know, I might start that, start at that one end earlier. So basically, from Lincoln Avenue to the east, it almost operates as its own project, so that residential portion of the project, we're almost act as its own, because that's where all the storm sewer, the water, the wastewater, the center sewer flows to. So it can almost act separately. So a contractor might look at that if he wants to run two crews, or he may decide, I'm just going to take care of that storm sewer, which I have to do early on because it's required by the contract, and then I might just focus all my attention elsewhere, and I'll get to that later in the season. Again, it's going to be really depend contractor dependent.
Chris, can I go back to the railroad thing? Now with the mill closed, why would that, why would they start there and waste a month, not waste, but start?
Because you got to start at the downstream end, and everything flows to that point.
I see.
Yeah, if we don't start at the west end, yeah, it's not feasible.
Okay, all right.
If you go back on the four way at night and you look back uphill, the high point is here by the church, everything runs westerly downhill.
Okay, any other questions or comments? If not, I guess I'll make a motion to approve the incentive portion of the agreement.
On second.
Second by Maggie Bass. Any other comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposition?
Aye.
Did you say aye?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Passes forward.
Thank you.
One last item, and I guess just a point that Mike wanted me to share with this, this is kind of the, we'll call it public informational, shows the detour route, the access routes into the downtown and stuff like that. That'll be something that will probably go on, or the chamber will go on, they'll provide information to the public, of how can I get to certain areas of the community, certain businesses, et cetera. So, we'll be working with them as part of that communication line.
All right, thanks, Chris. Good luck.
Yes.
Mike, you want to introduce the next?
Sure. We have with us tonight a contingency, contingent of individuals from the Mayo Clinic Hospital System, and I'm going to introduce the hospital administrator, you're going to introduce the group that you brought with you tonight, or are you...
I'll just take it.
Okay.
Then I'll... Yes, I'll let you do that on behalf of the group. Well, good evening, everyone, and thank you so much for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. My name is Dr. James Hebel, and I have the honor and privilege of serving as the regional vice president for Mayo Clinic Health System across southwestern Minnesota, of which it includes the Newpray Medical Campus here in town. My colleagues who I'll introduce here in a moment and I are grateful for the opportunity to speak before the council and the broader community, to talk through what we think is an incredibly exciting opportunity. And what we view that opportunity as, is a new partnership between Mayo Clinic and the city of Newpray to build an infrastructure that would allow us as your local healthcare provider to roll out new and innovative care models for the community of Newpray. So with me tonight to talk about what those new models will be, and we'll talk about those in more detail as the night goes on, I have a couple colleagues with me. The first is Mr. Paul Drucker, who will be here in just a moment for his portion of the presentation. Paul is the senior director, Mayo Clinic Ambulance and Emergency Medical Services, as well as Mr. Brad Schonbauer. Many of you know Brad very well. I've known Brad now for almost a decade, and I can attest that he has done an outstanding job of representing Newpray and the interests of this community, not only on the local board here at the hospital in Newpray, but also on the board representing Newpray, the broader regional board of directors as well. So over the next 25 minutes, we'd like to share with you a variety of different topics. In just a minute here, I'll be turning things over to Brad, so he can give you his perspective as a community board member on healthcare in Newpray, both past and present. I'll then come back up to the podium and talk to you about some strategic priorities that we have put into place here at the Newpray Hospital to allow us to continue growing that practice into a ongoing vibrant medical practice. I'll then take a moment or two to look to the future, and what we as a Mayo Clinic envision the future of healthcare for Newpray and the surrounding communities. And what that entails is those new models of healthcare that I talked about. These models of healthcare are referring to where the future of medicine is going. In other words, caring for patients not only within the four walls of our hospitals and clinics, but outside those walls, within our communities, and via a community paramedic program, literally bringing care into the homes of the patients throughout the community. And then lastly, we'll have Mr. Drucker come up and talk a little bit more about Mayo Clinic Ambulance itself, and the EMS services that we in fact provide. With that, I will turn things over to Brad to give you his perspective.
Good evening. For those of you who don't know me, I was born at the hospital here in Newpray. In other than seven years living and working in Texas, I have been a lifelong resident of Newpray in the nearby area. In the early 2000s, I was invited to join the Board of Directors for what was then Queen of Peace Hospital here in Newpray, and since our conversion to the Mayo Clinic Health System in 2011, as Dr. Hebel mentioned, I have continued to serve as a community board member for our local healthcare system. Just very briefly, history here, our hospital was built in the 50s. It was staffed and led by the Sisters of St. Benedict out of St. Joseph, Minnesota, and renamed the Queen of Peace Hospital. When I joined the board in 2001, it was evident that changes were already occurring. Soon afterwards, Sister Jean Juniman, our outstanding CEO, resigned, and that was kind of indicating the end of the Sisters' participation in the hospital here. And we were fortunate to find another outstanding CEO in Mary Klimp at that time. And one of the other big challenges we really were experiencing during that time as a small rural independent healthcare system was the inability to recruit and retain both primary care physicians for our clinics, as well as specialists to work in our hospital. It's just always been difficult to find people in those roles. That disruption continued to grow later in the decade, in 2008 with the collapse of the housing market and the start of the recession, and of course, in 2010 with the advent of the Affordable Care Act and all the disruption that brought to the healthcare industry. You can see up here, any day you can look at the headlines and see that we are in an increasingly volatile and competitive landscape. And even back more than a decade ago, it was pretty evident to us, to those of us who were on the Board of Directors, that a small independent rural hospital was going to struggle to survive in the healthcare of the future that we were foreseeing. So, we felt that we had to take action to identify strategic partnerships that were going to ensure the sustainability of local health here, here in Newpray. We met with and talked to a number of different organizations, all the names that you would know from around the area. One of our first key partnerships was with North Memorial, in our partnership to convert the EMS from a volunteer basic life support program to the professional advanced life support program. At that time, this transition made perfect sense. We had an emergency room that was staffed by doctors who were contracted through North Memorial, and our medical director, Mike Wilcox, from here in Newpray, was also a North Memorial physician. So it made perfect sense to integrate North Memorial EMS at that time. And as was shared at the meeting two weeks ago, we recognized that that was a difficult transition for the team here, to go from BLS to ALS is a significant advance. And frankly, we've been very fortunate here in Newpray to have had great support for the past decade and continuing today from the North Memorial System and from the individuals that are staffing our ambulances here in town. We as a board had another significant, and even more significant decision that we had to make after the ambulance, and that is that we knew, as I mentioned earlier, that small independent hospital was going to struggle to survive. And so we started looking at broader partnerships, and after a couple of years of research, we decided in 2011 to join the Mayo Clinic Health System. Now I recognize that even today, there are some in the community that share their disagreement with that decision, and they are certainly entitled to their opinion. I can tell you that in 20 years, volunteering on the Board of Directors and spending thousands of hours focused on healthcare here in Newpray, not as an employee of the healthcare system, but simply volunteering my time, I have received no compensation for any of the decisions that I've made, not $1 for being on the boards. Everything that I've done for the past two decades has been for one simple reason, and that is to ensure that those of us here in the community of Newpray have access to timely, high-quality healthcare as close to home as possible. And I can tell you that based on everything we knew about healthcare back then, and what we know today, if we had not joined a larger system, I truly believe that our hospital in Newpray would now be closed. And that might come as a surprise to hear that for some people, but I do truly believe that. Therefore, it was imperative for our board to identify a partner that... Therefore, it was imperative for our board to identify a partner that was going to be right for our community. And we felt that Mayo had two things to offer. The first was a system of quality care that's recognized nationally, and Mayo certainly has that. Second is something that we felt only Mayo could offer, and that was a vested interest in growing our market. Our concern was that if we partnered with any of the systems that had hospitals in the South Metro area, like in Shakopee or Burnsville, after a few years of that partnership, it would be very easy for those systems to say, you know, some of those New Prague folks are already driving to our hospital. We can save a lot of money by closing the New Prague facility, just let the rest of them drive north. And they would know that they'd still have all the business from New Prague because they'd still be the closest hospital. We knew that that was a significant risk. With Mayo Clinic Health System, there was no such risk. There would be no reason for them to enter this market unless they were committed to growing it, and that is exactly what they have done. And if I can give you just one example, I told you earlier how we struggled a decade ago to find and retain physicians. Well, we just recently decided to start offering podiatry services here in New Prague. That's the first time that's ever been offered here, and we now have a full-time podiatrist living and working in New Prague. When we posted that position a few months ago, 47 podiatrists applied for that role. Healthcare professionals want to be part of the Mayo Clinic Health System, and they want to be part of the New Prague community. And bringing those two together nine years ago has been very beneficial for our community and our healthcare here. As I turn it over now to Dr. Hebel, he's going to expand on the significant financial investments that Mayo has made in our community and is continuing to make going forward. And he'll also share with us, now that we have a Mayo hospital that's staffed by Mayo physicians, how it can benefit those of us in the community to have a fully integrated system with Mayo Clinic EMS. And with that, I will turn it over to Dr. Hebel.
Thanks, Brad. So, Mayo Clinic has an absolute commitment to this community, to Mayo Clinic Health System here in New Prague. And as we looked at our strategic priorities for this medical campus, there are basically four. Number one is to always continue our never-ending job of improving the quality, safety, and service. Number two is expanding medical and surgical services that are available locally. Number three is to modernize our facilities. And number four is to engage with the community to enhance and improve health and wellness for the patients and the communities we serve. So if we look at some of those priorities, this is a list of the medical and surgical services that are currently available in New Prague right here today. It's a very extensive list, one that has truly grown over the period of time, whether that's primary care, medical specialties, surgical specialties, or a variety of different therapies, as Brad alluded to. Many of these folks have joined the practice within the last few years and view this as an incredibly opportunistic market for them to practice healthcare within. So, a very broad and expansive medical and surgical services available locally. And as we continue to grow this practice, we'll be adding more and more specialists and providers here locally. If we look at the New Prague campus and some of the numbers, it may surprise some of you that we saw over 32,000 patients during 2019. During that same period of time, we performed just under 900 surgical cases or interventional procedures. We had just under 680 hospital admissions. We had over 2,100 transitional care unit bed days, which are the swing bed days for patients. Over 6,500 ER visits, and to annualize year-to-date, we had 5,200 urgent care visits. The urgent care was something, as most of you know, we recently modified in June of this year. We previously added the express care in the Cobra Clinic, but based upon community feedback, we transitioned that to a more comprehensive urgent care center on the hospital campus. That allowed us to do a couple of things. Number one allowed us to care for a broader spectrum of patients because in express care you can't care for kids under two or adults over the age of 70. So we can do that at an urgent care facility. We also now have the ability for onsite lab and radiology, et cetera. So, we can see in the red there, just the seven months of having the urgent care, we've almost surpassed the total volume of the express care in all of 2018. So, we view this as a significant win, once again, based upon community feedback that you wanted more, and we hopefully think that we were able to deliver that, that promise as well. If we look at investments, we said modernizing our facilities is another priority for the New Prague campus. We can see here that over the past several years, since we've become part of the New Prague community, we've had significant investments. During that time, we've invested about $14.4 million in the medical campus as well as the surrounding clinics, and you can see a list of them all over there. And we don't in any way intend to stop. Actually, for the next 12 to 24 months, we have two other, three other major projects planned and an additional $6.5 million. We hope to upgrade and bring in new CT scanner. We actually need to add another operating room to the hospital because surgical volumes are growing so quickly. At the same time, we need to remodel our sterile processing area because of higher surgical volumes, and we continue our renovations of the emergency department as well. So, significant capital investments in the past as well as moving into the future. Community partnerships, I said, was another major priority. Our goal as a Mayo Clinic to become true community partners so that we can enhance the health and wellness of the community to improve quality of life for the patients and the communities we serve. I won't go through these in detail, but you can see we've had a variety of partnerships, whether it's from the recently developed fitness and aquatic center to the public schools, a variety of other events and activities that we've become intimately partner as a partner within the New Prague community. So now I kind of really want to transfer to what we really view as the crux of this conversation and some of the opportunity that I previously discussed. And this is partnering with the city by allowing us to integrate EMS into our current hospital campus, to work side-by-side with physicians and nurses to roll out new and innovative models of healthcare. And what do some of these new and innovative models of healthcare look like? Well, this is just one such example of how we envisioned these models to work and are models that we've implemented elsewhere within the Midwest where Mayo Clinic has an integrated EMS system. So when anyone in this community calls 911, that call could be dispatched to our Mayo Clinic Command Center in Rochester. We have professionals there that are trained to provide onsite care instructions, medical instructions, whether it's to family members or to law enforcement before EMS arrives. We currently do that with several counties across Minnesota and Wisconsin. We could do that as well locally here as well, to launch that care process immediately following the 911 call until EMS is able to arrive. Once EMS arrives onsite, we now have the capability, as Mayo Clinic Ambulance, where we have video capabilities with our emergency room doctors in every rig that can be used, whether it's in the ambulance or taken into the patient's home. So those EMS paramedics have real-time interactions with the emergency room physicians here locally that can help launch care call calls as well. I also alluded earlier to providing care outside the hospital and providing care locally in the homes, and this is one example of that. We know that when patients call 911, about 2/3 of them never get admitted to the hospital, only about 1 out of 3. Of the 2/3 that never get admitted to the hospital, 90% end up back in their home within five hours of calling 911. In other words, we know not all patients need to be transported to the hospital. They didn't need that hospital visit, and they didn't need that cost of care. Rather, these community paramedics, through our interaction with our ER docs, could provide care onsite in the home and many times avoid a transfer to the hospital, try to avoid that added cost. And so that's one example of how an integrated system could provide care locally in the homes of our patients. Conversely, if they need to be transferred to the hospital, they are done so, and they would be transported to the hospital. At that point, because they are integrated with us, because they are part of our Mayo Clinic system, they can implement practice protocols and procedures that we as a Mayo Clinic have determined to be best practices within our hospitals and communities. And that can be a time-saving measure. In other words, we know, the ER docs know that these EMS crews, which are part of our system, have already implemented a variety of our Mayo Clinic protocols. So when they arrive onsite, they know steps one, two, and three have already been done so they can further facilitate the care of those patients locally through the ER. Another big component of that is what happens to patients once they're admitted, they're cared for, and then they're dismissed from the hospital and they go home. Well, once again, with the availability of an integrated EMS system, we have a community paramedic program in which our local EMS colleagues that are Mayo Clinic staffed employees go out and make house calls to those patients after they left the hospital. They can follow up with those patients, they can ensure medications are appropriately being used, they can assess their condition within the home, they can follow up on any medical conditions, contact back their local physician or their ER doc to ensure that things are progressing as expected after their hospital dismissal. And this is truly a contemporary way of caring for patients after hospital dismissal. It would only be possible and available with this integrated community paramedic program. One final thing then is even taking that one step further, and that's what's referred to as the home hospital concept. So Mayo Clinic will be launching a home hospital model this year in 2020. So what is a home hospital model? Well, it is providing acute care to patients not in the hospital, but literally in the comfort of their own home. So we have select patients that would otherwise be admitted to a hospital rather staying at home for a designated list of what we consider routine medical conditions that currently require hospitalization, but we can care for locally. We could provide IV fluids, IV antibiotics, provide wound care. Meals would be delivered to their home based upon a hospital diet. We would have medical equipment delivered directly to the patient's home. Physical therapists would come out, respiratory therapists, they would all come to the home to provide care for their medical conditions. And the care providers that do this work are nurse practitioners, nurses, as well as our community paramedics. They are an integral part of providing this home care in a variety of different circumstances. So truly an innovative model of the future that we at Mayo Clinic are rolling out and would have an essential piece of that, our community paramedic colleagues. So, that just gives you an example of some of the innovative care models that I think we could utilize within this community as well with, in fact, an integrated EMS system. With that, I'm going to turn things over to Mr. Drucker, who's going to tell you a little bit more about Mayo Clinic Ambulance and EMS service itself.
Thank you, Dr. Hebel, and thank you too, the council, for the opportunity to present tonight. I'll tell you, in the interest of time as well, want to tell you about our ambulance service here, but I will be grateful and happy to entertain questions as well with the contingent here. I'm here to represent really our team of 600 team members that care for patients in communities across Minnesota and Wisconsin, and we enjoy a 100-year-plus history of ambulance operations at Mayo Clinic. Early in the 1900s, Dr. Will and Charlie Mayo purchased a horse-drawn ambulance to serve the greater Rochester community. That ambulance still exists on display at the Mayo Clinic in Arizona campus today. I'll move to the map to just highlight a little bit about who we are and what we do. We currently serve 15 communities with ground ambulance operations. We have four air ambulance bases, three helicopter and one airplane. Last year, 2019, we received over 110,000 requests for service in this whole service area, and we have a count of caring for and transporting over 75,000 of those patients by ground and air ambulance and as well as community paramedic visits. We do that with a fleet of 75 ambulances that are distributed across the footprint. As I mentioned, four helicopters and one airplane, and really me, the proud senior director of the team that does great things every day. Want to talk a little bit about quality. We hold five different accreditations in our ambulance service. Essentially, every part of our ambulance service is accredited. Four of those five are voluntary. We're the only EMS agency in Minnesota and Wisconsin that holds this contingent of accreditations. And as far as we can tell nationally, there's only one handful of organizations that can say that they can sustain these accreditation. Sorry to interrupt that. The second part of quality I want to touch on is just the patient experience. We quarterly, through a third-party vendor survey, randomly survey by phone about 600 patients that we've transported and cared for. And you see that 98% of those patients say that our care was good, very good, or excellent. Our courtesy and professionalism and our skill and knowledge as well were 98% good, very good, and excellent. The third part I want to touch on, the quality, is that similar to today, patients have a say in their care, they have a say in destination, they have a say in how we do care for them, and that would be certainly sustained moving forward if there was a decision to change your ambulance provider. We're highly committed to education. We operate our own paramedic training program in collaboration with Mayo Clinic School of Health Sciences and Rochester Community and Technical College. This may will graduate our fifth class of paramedics, and about 80% of those paramedics, when they graduate, continue employment with us in our service. We're an American Heart Association Improved Training Center, and we provide all the basic life support, advanced cardiac life support, pediatric advanced life support training for all of Mayo Clinic annually. That's about 11,000 students that cycle through those classes, and that includes the team here in New Prague at the healthcare campus here. We provide for our own team members internally, we provide all of their ongoing continuing education and competence at no cost to them, as well, we pay them to attend all that training, and that's something you can respect to many EMS agencies regionally and nationally. As well, education-wise, we do have some external agency agreements that we provide education solutions for communities like Redwood Fire, as well as Mankato Public Safety with law enforcement and firefighters there. First response training. Picture highlighted to our mobile simulation environment that we can assemble very quickly and we deploy that out in a variety of different environments to simulate both by ground and air ambulance patient care situations to help enhance the training of our team. We're highly involved in all the communities that we serve across that map I showed, have a variety of high-level examples there, but I want to touch on the bottom bullet point, Sentimental Journey is a program that we've supported for a number of years, and that's a program where our team members volunteer to care and transport hospice patients that have a dying wish to do, attend some activity or personal event, weddings, baptisms, twins games. Just a couple of years ago, a gentleman desired to spend an afternoon with horses because he loved horses, and we were able to take him out to a horse farm and spend a beautiful sunny afternoon adjacent to the pasture so he can enjoy the horses, and subsequently died two days later, but was a very meaningful event. We never lack from volunteers, our team, to participate in those opportunities. A question you may have about how would we, if we were operating the ambulance service in this community, how would we staff that? And looking at a little bit of the volume that we know and also comparing to similar operations within our own family, we would propose that we would staff a 12-hour day shift, on-duty crew, a 12-hour on-duty night shift, as well, we'd have an on-duty crew to cover peak hours. Typically, that's about a 10 to 10 or a 9 to 9 type peak volume hours. We know measuring all of our services, that all of our volume is quite predictable, and so we have high confidence that we could staff that and help meet the community needs. To balance out the lower volume hours, we would have an on-call shift at night, typically 10:00 p.m. to 10:00 a.m. to cover that balance. We're always studying how we're delivering care in the communities that we meet, that we serve, and we would enhance services as needed to serve the community or the health system, both. One example, over the last five to seven years, we've added over 40 FTE, over 40 people to, across our service area to meet the needs of growing demand. A transition to employment with us, we would certainly welcome local or regional EMTs, paramedics to join our service if we were chosen to serve this community. We'd be very happy to work with anyone to seek employment. seek employment with us. As well, I want to highlight that we have a specialized pediatric and transport, UNEO transport teams that originate from Rochester. Those teams already serve New Prague. They come here by ground and by air ambulance to support the needs of those special patients. That would certainly continue with, if there was a transition of the services to us. We make a number of continuous improvements every year. One thing we're proud of, want to highlight, and an opportunity for you as well, that January 1, 2019, Plainview, Minnesota, the city elected to transition their EMS license to us, and we now operate the ambulance service for the greater Plainview, Minnesota area. A little bit different dynamics than what we're discussing here today, but I offer that out as an opportunity for the city of New Prague to connect the city of Plainview to assess how we did in that transition and how we're serving that community. We made well over $10 million in upgrades to our facilities over the last five years. We've built new facilities in Owatonna, Fairmont, Albert Lee, Austin, and we've renovated facilities in Mankato. This Thursday, we'll bless, rebless our ambulance facility in Superior, Wisconsin. And we currently have a significant expansion of our operations in Rochester right now. Our ambulance fleet, 75 ambulances, we replace about 15% of those ambulances every year. That's typically about 11 or 12 ambulances. I think one thing we're very proud of is, and sometimes more significantly, is that we donate, most of the ambulances that we cycle out of the fleet, we donate to agencies and organizations that are in need of vehicles, such as law enforcement, SWAT support. Just recently, one of the ambulances, we donated to an agency, they repurposed that ambulance and transported it to Haiti, and it's now serving in Haiti as an ambulance for a community there. We just deployed a brand-new ventilators and airway equipment to help improve the management of our patients in their most critical times. And we've already seen, just in a little over a month of deployment of that, we've seen really nice improvement in our ability to care for patients. Dr. Heewell highlighted our tele-emergency medicine and some of those community strategies. We just completed in 2019 a study of those devices, tele-emergency medicine devices, where we take a device where we can virtually connect with an emergency physician in Rochester and bring that device into a patient's home or in the ambulance. And the purpose of the pilot was really to assess connectivity, knowing that we're going to deploy these, essentially all of our ambulances, so that we can have, add physician presence right at the patient's bedside in their own home. Those emergency physicians as well, our practice partner, our practice parent at Mayo Clinic is Emergency Medicine. Emergency Medicine physicians here in New Prague, they're all part of the Department of Emergency Medicine in the Midwest, they're all part of the same team, and we would enjoy that relationship with them as well as we do across the footprint now. Dr. Heewell mentioned our community paramedic program that started four years ago, a pilot program in Barron, Wisconsin. We've annually completed over 1,000 home visits with just one, two community paramedics, but essentially one FTE of time. These are patients that we identified four years ago, patients that had used the emergency department at least five times in the previous year. And then the program actually evolved to recognize patients that were, had chronic health states that were at high risk for admission or readmission to the hospital. Our community paramedics develop care plans with primary care providers. They visit patients in their home, they provide accountability, medication reconciliation, assessments, some point-of-care testing for patients that are needing an INR check in their own home on blood thinners. They document that visit in the electronic health record, and it's immediately sent to the primary care physician so we can have a collaborative care model for the patients in the community. Our own survey of the results, the effect of that effort is that patients are happier, they're healthier, their utilization and time in the hospital has decreased, and it's really gone well. And we're ready to, we're ready to expand that program in 2020, as Dr. Heewell highlighted, with not only community paramedicine, but home hospital and a couple of other strategies that will completely turn tide scales, hopefully known about how EMS fits in communities and cares for patients. With that, I'd like to turn it back over to Dr. Heewell to conclude. Thank you.
So I'll just finish up here then with a summary slide. We know New Prague is a progressive community, as your motto states. And we do truly think this could be a progressive partnership, really looking at new ways to provide health care to communities, given the challenges of healthcare today. So what, in summary, would a transition to Mayo Clinic ambulance and EMS be? It would be a partnership that could provide access to high-quality and timely EMS care for the New Prague community as well as the surrounding communities. A transition would provide New Prague with a comprehensive and integrated EMS system that's part of our local healthcare, that is part of the local hospital, the local clinics, the local physicians, and the local nurses. It would allow the New Prague community, through this integrated model, to benefit by rolling out and implementing these new models of healthcare that are being rolled out around the country, whether that's the pre-hospital care we talked about, the community paramedic, or the home hospital model. A transition would allow Mayo Clinic health system, the hospital campus itself, to continue to grow and to thrive and to adapt to the ever-changing healthcare environment, which nowadays have become even more and more difficult. So this would allow this campus to continue to grow and thrive. And lastly, what this partnership would do, it would not in any way restrict patient choice, as Paul alluded to, nor would it increase costs of care to patients in New Prague or within the surrounding communities. So with that, we appreciate the time once again this evening. We look forward to your consideration for this partnership and be happy to ask any questions.
Typically, where you've entered the market, how long is your implementation to time to EMS?
Thank you, that's a very good question. I think we would typically say we'd like it about six months, because we want to make sure, first and foremost, the highest priority is continuity of care for the community aside from any transition. So that would be the basic mark I would be.
Any other questions? No? Okay, if not, thank you very much.
Can I say a few words?
What's that?
Can I say a few words?
Sure.
I'm Ron McProom, and I've been a resident of this fine city for 49 years. During 20 of those years, I served on the Queen of Peace Hospital Foundation Board. We raised over, I don't have the figures, but well over $1 million during those years. Got to give a lot of that credit to Carol Lyne, who was the foundation director during those years, all of them. And through her insight, she gave us much leadership that we were able to do this. In these 49, 49 years, I have to say, the worst thing I've ever seen happen in this community was Mayo took over our hospital. If you didn't hear me, I'll say it again. Worst thing, worst thing I've seen, in my opinion, was Mayo taking over our hospital 49 years. City council members, Mayor Nicolai, Administrator Johnson, that deserves an explanation, I think you'll agree with me. Back when Mayo took over, about eight years ago, there was a New Prague times, they had a meeting, if you wanted anything to know about Mayo taking over, to come to that meeting. Well, people in this town, I believe, were enamored by the name of Mayo, myself included. And I think a lot of the whole community was. A lot of them didn't go to the meeting, about 10 people did. One of the questions asked is, what are we getting in return for our hospital? What are you paying for it? We're just taking over, they just took over our debt, and they also got Queens Court and the Fitness Center. So I could see the board doing this, but you'd think they would have been able, not just to take over the debt, there'd be something more there. And one of the outfits that wanted to look into this was Abbott or Alina. They were not given the chance. They wanted, they were told that we're dealing with Mayo and we'll let you know if we're interested. So Mayo's the only one that came down to the final negotiations that they dealt with. Nothing was ever explained why they didn't say anything to, anything to Abbott, which I will disagree with a previous speaker. Most people in this community want to go into the cities, that's where their relatives live. It's a lot closer, 30, 40 miles. They don't have, they don't go down to Rochester, Mankato, 80 miles away. And the other, the other thing is, after these eight years, when Mayo took over, they right away, there's a lack of ethics with this outfit. You know what they did on the, right after they took over? They told their employees that Parkview Medical Clinic is not near, not near network, that's a competition. So an employee of Queen of Peace, excuse me, now Mayo Hospital, had to change clinics if they were going to Parkview. Goldsmith Eye Clinic was not in the network. The employees had to drive 20, 30 miles, 20, 30 miles to go to, go to somebody that's in the Mayo network. By the way, my, my, I'm talking about Mayo Clinic Health Systems though, not Mayo Clinic, excuse me, not Mayo down in Rochester. Mayo Clinic Health Systems is a separate division of, separate from Mayo Clinic. That's the ones that have our hospital. And they're the ones that, in my opinion, have a lack of ethics. Eventually, they did allow Parkview Medical Clinic and Goldsmith to be included. Another example, they had a housekeeping, been there for 35 years, 35 years in our community. She was told she had to get a college degree after 35 years running housekeeping for this That's one of their tactics. They got to get a college degree. Most of them won't do it, and they quit, and they don't have to pay unemployment. Then, this person said they would get a college degree. So then they let, so then they let her go. Talking about moron ethics? Mayo Clinic Health Systems, a few years ago, started buying up all the hospitals and clinics in the southwestern Minnesota area. They won't admit this, but this was done, once they bought them all, what do you think happened to the rates? They charged double than what other providers charged. They'll even admit this, but they've got ego, they say it's because we're better. They're not, 20 years ago, they were right, they were better than a lot of places. Not anymore. Abbott is considered one of the top five heart hospitals in the United States. And they bought up all these hospitals and clinics in southwestern Minnesota. And then, of course, their ambulances all bring their people to Mankato because Mankato Hospital, I think, has a little trouble making it on its own. So that's what's been happening, happening there. St. Peter, tell you the story of St. Peter. Front page of the St. Peter Herald a few years ago, they came into, they came into St. Peter. They wanted to buy the hospital and plenty, things done in other communities. Well, they were, they bought the clinic, but the city wouldn't sell to them. They didn't like that. After a year, they noticed, the hospital noticed that their, which is owned by the city of St. Peter, that their revenue was going down a lot. You know what separated the clinic now owned by Mayo Clinic Health Systems and the hospital owned by the city of St. Peter? One foot of brick, a wall. A woman went up for a physical, and she's, they said, you need a mammogram. And they told her, you have to go up to our place in that ghetto and get your mammogram. She's, well, can I get it at the hospital? No, they don't do that anymore. A deliberate lie. All she had to do was walk 30 feet down the hallway and get her, get her mammogram. After a year, they noticed other tests like this. They found out, they interviewed these people, the city of St. Peter sued Mayo Clinic Health Systems over this. The city of Fairmont wanted to kick them out. You don't kick out Mayo. I will tell you, people, Mayor Nicolai, city council members, Mayo controls you with their deep pockets. And a lot, a lot of talk you heard tonight sounds well, well and good, but you know what the bottom issue is here? I'm not here speaking for NOR. I'm here as a New Prague citizen. But people in, I won't say this, talk to your card groups, your golf club groups, ask these questions. Mayo Clinic Health Systems does not have a good reputation here in New Prague. You want proof? St. Francis, over in Shakopee, you know where they get their customers from? Where most customers come from? Shakopee. That's not a surprise, is it? You know the second, you know the second highest is? New Prague. You made your own bed, Mayo, here in town, now you don't want to sleep in it. Now, there's proof right, proof right there. You charge double what others charge, or 50% more. And I had one, one example, two, it was the bottom line too, where a single guy went to the hospital for emergency, had a ear problem, they took him down by ambulance to Rochester, he was never asked where he wanted to go, never was brought up. They took him down to Mayo in Rochester, he was out in three hours, guess what? The temperature was 10 below, he didn't even have a good jacket to wear. His parents couldn't come down and get him because the roads were icy, you know, like we just had recently, but this was a year or two ago. And he had to get a hotel room to stay overnight. I believe this is to an ACA, the Affordable Care Act, a person has the right in an ambulance to decide where they want to go. And if you don't convince me different, I don't care what you people from Mayo say, but I don't think you ask those people. And this is why you want to get rid of NOR, because you're not getting enough business from NOR, because they're following the rules and asking the people where they want to go. And with your reputation around here, they're not all going to Mayo. They're going to St. Francis or elsewhere. I guess I've said enough, but I guess I'll just end this with, when it comes to Mayo, I prefer mustard.
What was your name, sir?
Ron, Ron McProom.
Thank you for your company.
Having a common call with him? Well, very short. This isn't, it was not a public hearing.
This is very short.
Okay.
One last thing, I think you should have a public hearing, or a public forum, I'm changing this, because if you go with Mayo, we made one mistake already, you're going to get flack if you make the second one.
That was going to be one of my points about having a public forum, because I think this has been kind of under-the-cover type of thing.
I need your name and address.
Oh, excuse me, Werner Askewich, 713 First Street, Southeast, and unfortunately, I'm Ron's neighbor. The gentleman I presented about all the technology with the ambulance service is very impressive. But before a decision is made, I think the council members need to sit down with NOR and ask the same questions. Do they have the same capabilities? Do they have the same type of service that can be provided? One of the things that, here's my primary concern, is my understanding that some ambulances operate within a zone, just within the zone, and are not allowed to transport patients outside the zone. Is that the case here? I don't know. Does Mayo operate within that zone, and everybody has to go to the hospital that they, that they choose? Not that the patient chooses, but that the ambulance zone is in. If I had a major health problem, and I wanted to go to Abbott, or I wanted to go to Shakopee, or I wanted to go somewhere else, within this, if it operates within that zone concept, I rightfully couldn't do it. Time is, time is an issue when it comes to healthcare and ambulance service, matter of life and death. I recently heard a horror story, and I believe it to be true, because the source I heard it from, the police officer in La Seca who was shot. They did not want to take him to Rochester. The ambulance wanted to take him to Rochester. Police authorities and others said, no, we're going to HCMC, to the trauma center. But 13 minutes to resolve that situation, in that time, that gentleman could have died. So it's a matter of life and death and time. I have personally observed our ambulance crew with, with a neighbor, not this one, but they're very, very professional, very competent, work as a team, and I hope that you look at, really, well, how can you compare? What do you compare here? But the big one I'm concerned about is this zone, because a lot of people I know want to go to St. Francis, or they want to go to Abbott, or they want to go to HCMC. Thank you.
Thanks for your time. Okay, thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, Mike?
Okay, uh, next on the agenda, Mike?
I think we should, in kind of summary, that to explain for those that aren't familiar or are wondering kind of what's, what's happening, is that North Memorial Health provided the council with both an ambulance service contract and a building disagreement at the first meeting in January. The primary reason, as we talked about, is the renewal time period for the, both of those agreements is May 1. The gentleman that was the vice president for ambulance services out of North retired last week, and so it was his desire in our discussion that at least those contracts be put together and updated before he left. At the same time, we have had ongoing discussions with Mayo to, due to their interest, as you heard tonight, a desire to potentially get into the ambulance service business. So the council hasn't structured anything, hasn't done anything, other than simply accepted the presentation from North, and now this evening, the presentation from Mayo. We didn't set up any particular action items, and so I think it'll be up to the council to digest what they heard tonight, and what we heard on the renewal from North, and probably at the next meeting, have some general discussion as to what direction you'd like to proceed, or what you'd like to see happen, and what might be involved in that process, because this wasn't necessarily set up as a competitive proposal. We've had ten, we're in the tenth year with North Ambulance, and so from the original agreement that was done in about 2010, we had one renewal in 2015, so this was just being set up for the second renewal. So now we have an interesting twist in the process, and the council has a couple of choices to think about, and so we probably need to come back at the February meeting and have dialogue within council and staff, and talk about what you've heard, and what you think you might like to do, to take a look at where we go going forward, based on what you've heard from the two, the two companies.
I agree. And it, and this item on the agenda, there was no action required, it was more informative, and I think the council was aware that we have a renewal date at May 1st. That's why we decided to address this issue. Early enough time to give us ample time to do some research and determine which avenue.
And until tonight, and Maggie asked the question, we had no specific idea as to what was the timeframe that Mayo thought that they could get up and running, and I think we heard six months is, is what.
Yeah, if I could clarify that. We've had internal discussions, if there was a decision and, and May 1st wasn't absolute, we could make it happen, but six months, we, we want to make sure that the continuity of the service again is, is pristine, so if May 1st was the date, you said you need to us to have it up and running, if there's a decision in that direction, we will make it happen. Thank you.
I thank you very much for summarizing that, and I guess I would put it on the agenda for further discussion at the first meeting in February, and kind of set direction which way we, as a council, want to go.
Okay, and I think we should thank all the representatives from Mayo for taking the time to come in and provide the presentation and the overview that they did tonight.
Yes, I appreciate, appreciate it. I know these are, by our two gentlemen, these are emotional issues that have to be looked at, and, but we appreciate the information that was given tonight, we appreciate the presentation that North did two weeks ago. I grew up with North since, they've been here ten years, and this is my tenth year as mayor, so I've, I've only known more North, and I've had a good relationship with North, but we definitely need to address this before May fif, or May 1st, so let's put it on the agenda, and we can kind of get a direction.
In some respects, it's a nice, it's a nice problem to have, that we have, you know, the choice of two very quality, capable services, and that you will have a choice and a direction as to where you want to go, as you evaluate all of that information.
Yes, I agree. Thank you, everyone, for your comments.
Thank you, Rob.
Thank you for listening. Uh, next, Ken.
Couple of animal ordinance amendments here to work with you tonight. First ordinance amendment is related to the time period of the annual animal license renewal, which currently runs from April 15th of each year to April 14th of the following year. Pet confusion over the years on this particular topic, that they don't run in a calendar year term, and that really is more specific to when you get a tag, you know, just not one year on it, so you can't just easily identify if it's current or not, and people that register their pets have, have that issue and have brought it up over the number of years, and finally, I talked to the staff last week that do the renewals, and thought that we should at least bring this in front of the council for discussion and consideration, to basically have that run from January 1 of each year to December 31 of the same year, and then we can have tags, actually have the, the year that those dog licenses are, are running. Generally speaking, it kind of varies from year to year, but between 180 and 210 dog licenses over the past five-year time period, we charge $10 for the tag, and if anybody needs replacements, $5. So it's not a huge revenue generator, or anything, we wouldn't expect the number to change based on this change, but just make it easier for people to understand that they run in that calendar year. So that's really the one area of this animal ordinance amendment. The second one is related to, I know Mayor Nicolai had a call or an email on this issue, and we've had this many, many times over my fifteen years with the city, related to the control of animal feces specifically. This one related to why our ordinance only precludes, prohibits dogs from leaving their feces in public or other people's private property, and that including cats. Pretty basic change to be made. So what we've done is to 90.08, add in addition to dog or cat, this is the language being added for the same provision. And in talking to the police chief, Garise, and, you know, how that is monitored, generally speaking, the police like to see that, but with the advent of some better technology today, people have doorbell cams and other type of technology that could be used in support of that activity occurring on somebody's property, particularly if they can prove where the cat was coming from, or who it belonged to. So those are the two big minor changes. It looks like a lot more language in the dog license area, but just cleaned up some other language in there, specific to that section that didn't read very clearly, but in a nutshell, just changing the renewal period, and then adding cats to the control of feces provisions as well.
Ken, I just have one suggestion, and, and this is just looking for the future that in the event the city allows other animals to be considered pets. I know that we've had discussions about chickens and things, so instead of the control of feces being a dog or cat, just say the custodian of an animal, you know, in that way, we don't have to go back and change the ordinance in the event that we allow other creatures to be pets?
Uh, we potentially could do that.
I would agree with you to expand that, because there are pigs that are pets.
We currently do not allow pot-bellied pigs as pets in our ordinance, but...
Oh, yeah. We also have some raising pigs on Main Street, do you remember that?
Yeah, we could look into the, broadening it, but still have to be an animal that is allowed to be kept, and that's basically another part of our animal code that I don't have for consideration here, but, yeah, I could verify the city attorney that, that we could do that.
I'm glad you explained the video and the doorbell thing, because I was trying to envision our police department staking out.
No, they would not, not do that, and historically, and up until I talked to the police chief last week, historically, they would want to see that happening, so there's very little enforcement, because we would not, we have a better system than staking out animals going onto other people's property, but, yeah, with the advent of these cameras, a lot of them run 24 hours a day on their, you know, front step, or whatever it might be.
Or even someone on their cellphone, if they saw, if they're doing that in their video, you know, they would have some...
So there have been cases where that has been utilized for, for dogs, I guess, would be the case at this point.
So maybe why don't we check with the attorney and see if that would be allowable?
Yep.
And then we can bring it back, and, I mean, it, it makes sense to me. I know, when I first talked to Ken about it, he mentioned that other part of the ordinance did...
You could utilize that to that same effect, but it did not read specifically as this provision in 90.08 reads, so.
Oh.
It could have been an oversight, it could have just simply been a matter of, it had wanted included at the time this was adopted by the council, but I, I tend to believe it was really an oversight, because every other provision of, of the control of, you know, those animals specifically included cats, and this one just did not.
Okay, so why don't we table this for now, and see if we can make that change, put it on for the next meeting?
Certainly will.
Awesome. Thank you. We got a lot of fun topics today.
Yes, they are, aren't they?
Makes it interesting.
Uh, in front of you is nothing more than information that I felt the council should be aware of, of things that are happening on the compo site. And it's kind of a touchy subject, because it's really a nice benefit for the residents in New Prague to have this site available to them, to use, to, to get rid of brush, grass clippings, things like that. It's turning into kind of a dump site for us. We're fighting more and more garbage out there, being tires, appliances, mattresses, things like that, that we're getting rid of, I'll say on somewhat a weekly basis, not that many items all at one time, but it seems like there's always something out there. Just to give you a little history, many years ago, it used to be closed except during regular hours of the Public Works Garage. That was a lot of years ago. It was decided, and I can't find any documentation, and thinking it was about 2001, it was decided to try and leave it open 24/7. It worked very well for a number of years. Like I said, the problem with the garbage, it just started showing up, I don't know, say, three years ago, could be four years ago, and it seems to get progressively worse here. The other thing that we ran into this year, as it says in, in this memo, is the cost of getting rid of the brush. There obviously was a market out there for the woodchips, and there isn't anymore, because we used to be able to get rid of all of our brush out there for around $2,000, and this year, the contractor says, "No, I'm not doing it for two anymore, and I just can't afford to do it." And so we got a couple other prices, and the cheapest we could find was $7,000. We know there is a lot of, of quite a few people that are coming from the surrounding area, being out in the country, because we caught them, and we've talked to them about it, and they'll argue with you and say, "I live in New Prague." Where do you live? Cedar Lake. That's not the city limits of New Prague. And you'll get a pretty heated argument from them. I don't know what the answer is, I'm not even here to say you gotta make a decision on anything. I'm just here to tell you that it looks like if we continue the way we're going, it's gonna start costing the city more and more money to deal with the brush, to deal with the, the grass clippings, the leaves, things like that, plus the garbage. We have to haul it to Shakopee and pay a recycling charge on, on mattresses, on appliances, things like that. The argument always comes up is, "Well, if you don't leave them dumped, but there you'll be picking out of the ditch," which you will, we find that quite often, we're picking stuff out of the ditch, so, one way or another, they will get rid of it. So again, nothing more than information for you. I did check with a number of communities around us, Montgomery and Longstow are the only ones. Now, I did just recently find out that Northfield and Ferb will also have an open dump site for the general public, for the people that live in the city limits. After talking to Montgomery and Longstow, all got the same complaint. Yep, all they're doing is picking garbage out, I got a brush coming from, I don't know where it's all coming from. And Montgomery still is far enough out in the country where they can burn, it's a little easier. Longstow's running into more and more trouble, I was just told, because of the housing. We used to burn many years ago too, and it's almost impossible, you could just never find that many days in a row, that that wind is gonna be coming from the perfect direction, that we're not gonna be just smoking somebody out, either the school or one of the residents. So burning is really a challenge there. We were able to make it happen this year, but we sat long and hard and waited for those perfect days, and we got them, it's not gonna always happen. We got burned more times in past years than it was worth, so. I got put out there, I believe we got three options, and again, just nothing more for you to stick above, but, you know, we can go back to just leaving it open during the day, which is not convenient for a lot of people, I totally understand that. We try to find somebody to manage it, that, of the cities I've talked to, it's just really tough. First off, we can't, first off, find that person that wants to do that, it's really kind of boring just sitting there. And second off, it's gonna have to be somebody that's got a backbone, because I'll tell you, I've discussed this with a few people that have got a load of brush, and they're from outside the city limits, and it's not an easy, oh, I'm sorry, I guess I didn't realize that, and they drive away. Even if they do drive away, I bet you ten plus, they're coming back at 10 o'clock at night and dumping it anyway, so I don't think we want.
And I have a suggestion, maybe something to look at, because we actually belong to a club close down to the Fair Bowl, and we have to use like a magnetic card, and swipe it, and the gate opens, and then it closes behind you. And so if the city were to sell, even, you know, just the cost of the car, card and the administration time, come into City Hall, purchase your card, and then you'll be able to use the compo site. And that, and it's still the honor system, I mean, because someone can hand somebody else their card, but it would be a way to know that that person lives within the city limits, and then they would have access to what the city service is being provided.
How often do you buy that card? Every time you want to use the yard, or once a year, or?
It, it could be just a one-time fee, right? So just, let's say the card costs $10 to issue it and administer it, and you know who that card belongs to, if the card, and it's good forever, right? And if it's lost, then there's, you know, a nominal fee to replace it, but that way you would know who that card belongs to.
I didn't think of that. I don't know who would, that system would cost, I don't, we looked many years ago...
And this is, I mean, we're talking, it's the Fair Bowl, Fair Bowl Gun Club.
Good.
And so it's a low-cost system, it's just two meters, one going in and one coming out, and a gate that runs on a chain.
Gotcha.
Very simple.
And I guess to me, if it's a big enough hassle, maybe even look at putting cameras there, and then picking up cameras, license plate numbers, and, you know, you can...
Harder and more fun.
You can, you can start seeing people's license plate number, and you could contact and say, "Well, what were you doing in the compo?" "Well, I dropped your stuff off." You don't live in the city of New Prague, it's not your thing, you know, that's another option.
And, and we did look at that, and I talked to a couple of communities, one of them was Shakopee, that talked about having the same system for a different area, and he said, "The only problem with that is, once the problem's done, once something happens, unless you're monitoring it and go, 'Whoa, I caught them,'" you know, if you see it a week later, or a day later, or two days later, you're still dealing with the fact that something's dumped. It's gotta be a good system to see that license plate, and it's, it's another, it's a challenge sometimes, is to get that to, but it's still, yeah, it's still an idea.
Right.
Maggie's idea is a good one, I mean, in the city I came from, the city council actually took turns doing garbage dumps in compo.
Don't volunteer.
I'm pretty sure we're not gonna do that, but, we, we go back, and, well, it was kind of the Stone Age, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not...
Well, I, I, I think whoever has the next article should maybe put something in there about what makes a person in New Prague a resident of the city of New Prague.
There's a camera right there.
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
It's pretty, Jack.
Well, no, I, I, Mike and I were talking about this, I think people, once they see they have, they're a five, six, oh, seven, one, that they're living city limits. So they get all the things that all a city limit person would get, even though they don't... even though they don't live in the city limits. You know, you even gotta explain to them, "Look at your taxes. Do you pay New Prague taxes?" "Well, I pay Cedar Lake Township." Well, then you're not a resident of the city of New Prague.
We get snowplow complaints from Cedar Lake. Maybe, that's a great idea. And I wonder, do we need to, can we direct you to look into something?
Well, yeah.
I can definitely look into it.
Sure. I would say we should look into some technological options. Because it doesn't make sense to man someone there, because now you're gonna have, you're gonna get someone who's gonna punish somebody. You know, they're gonna go, "You know, I've been doing this for years, you know..."
It's pretty hot out there. I'm witnessing it myself.
Yeah, you know, we have an incinerator in the county where we have a cabin, so we can take things and do it, and they require proof of residence or property tax payer. And there's no ifs, ands, or buts, or animosity, or never been any hurt feelings or anything. So I think if you have all the information in front of the issue, in front of them, and you have the signage out there ahead of time, I don't know that you should get that kind of a fisticuff issue or anything like that.
I think eventually people would figure it out. I think the initial period, what is that, the first summer probably, or... But whoever you put there is gonna have to have some kind of a backbone.
Yeah, I think if furnished to the city residents, we should have some kind of a system to do it. Yeah, I really support both ideas working together, the video and the other thing. But I had a question. From reading the memo, it seemed like the leaf and the grass clippings, I assumed there was gonna be a problem with that, that we're doing that, that that adds value to us in some way. Do we get any compost that we use out of that, or...
We do, we do, but we have so much, but at this point...
Is it useful to us, or can our residents use it?
We use it for top dressing for areas behind curb. Let's say, snowplow skins the grass, and we're gonna put seed in there next spring. So we'll use that to kind of, we'll work up the area and use this as top dressing, because it's great fertilizer. It's really got a lot of nutrients to it. We've had some residents that have come and got it, and then complained that there's a lot of weeds in there, because we don't treat it for weeds. It was more popular years ago than it is today. We don't get anybody coming there, or not that I'm aware of. We're asking to use it.
We're accumulating it. I mean, we seem to use it.
We can't use as much as we get.
Really?
Uh, we get from street sweeping and from all the people hauling leaves and grass clippings. It's a huge pile every year.
So would a farmer take it?
He might. I don't know. I don't know.
I don't think residents know that that would be available to them.
Um, that could be. We could put it in, we used to put an article in the newsletter, and we could probably start doing that again.
Especially, you know, coming the spring, people are rejuvenating their gardens, fixing the lawn from snow damage and that sort of thing. So I think we would get quite a few takes.
That's a good idea. We could put it in the newsletter again and talk about it.
I'll just tell you when to bring it over to my house, bud.
Yeah, see. I go home between 2:00 and 6:00?
My wife has to. Okay. Thank you, Glenn.
You're welcome.
Next item relates to a meeting that Mike and I have to actually go through a eight or five. Mike, do you want to take that?
Sure.
Save my voice.
Yeah, you sound horrible.
Thanks.
Historically, as we've interacted with the New Prague Volunteer Farmers Relief Association, the city has three designated city representatives that serve as trustees on that nine-member board. Historically, that's been the mayor, myself, and the fire chief. In the case of taking a look at it in a little bit more detail, it's been this way for a number of years, I decided to do just a little bit more research into it, and in taking a look at it, I provided you some information from the state auditor's office as far as the makeup of the board and, you know, the choices that the city technically has, as well as a copy of statute 424A.04 that takes you to make up the composure from the city side of things. Technically, there's at least one elected municipal official, and then the second choice could either be an elected or an appointed. I think it's been the city administrator historically, just because of the involvement of working with the Relief Association and the work that we do relative to the certification and the city's contribution to the Relief Association. But I guess I decided, you know, once I looked at it a little bit further, is that the term of the appointments really are for one year or until the person's successor is qualified, is that I thought, well, maybe it's prudent and appropriate, you know, to provide a little greater education, and maybe have the council confirm and take action as to just exactly who you want to be on that Relief Association. I think the meeting that the mayor and I are about to go to is kind of the annual reporting from the 2019 activity as to how well the Relief Association assets have done as far as growth and what have you over this past year. In July, I think, is when we get the form from the fire department as far as the analysis that they do in the Relief Association that determines what the city's contribution should be for the following budget year. So I interacted all those fronts, and, you know, from that standpoint, probably hopefully bring some value to that process by being the appointed official on behalf of the city in addition to what historically I think has been the mayor serving in that capacity. And then the chief of the fire department is kind of just a given. But those are the three. The other six come within the Relief Association. And so that's really the extent of it, and so I just wanted to kind of, you know, bring you up to speed and educate you, and then maybe take action to reaffirm that this is what the council as a whole really wants to have happen.
Any questions from Mike on this?
It would seem to dovetail if we just approved it in January and all of the other things. Correct, that's what I surmised. That's why I went to this extent, and I could just move it back with the other appointments that go on at that first meeting in January. But it had been that way for quite some years, and I guess that I inherited it that way and didn't give it a lot of thought until I stepped back and delved a little bit further into kind of researching it, and, you know, took a look at really what the term is, and that it really is the council's choice. And when you have a new council coming in in two years potentially, it's probably something that at least should be on the radar to understand why we're involved in that part of the process. Because in the end, is that depending upon the benefit amount that's ultimately approved by the council, the report that they do ultimately determines what our financial contribution is or isn't to the Relief Association in the next budget year. Should appoint someone for this.
What's that?
Is it already taken her for this, or...
No, we should probably. I think we'd like to do an official appointment for this year. And then, like you said, I think it'll be part of our annual appointments.
Is it somebody additional to you and Mike, or...
No, just Mike.
It's reaffirming.
Just reaffirming you.
Right.
Because the council, you have two choices. One is, a elected official has to be on. Then the second one can either be an elected official or an appointed official, which is the capacity that I'm serving in.
Right, so you need it in an action.
Yeah.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, I got a motion by Rex Taylor, segment by Sean Ryan to approve the elected official mayor position and the appointed city administrator and the fire chief as a fire department representative. On motion a second, if there's no other questions. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay. And noted that we'll also put this on the annual appointees every year and in that first meeting in January. Okay, next on the agenda, consent agenda. Does anyone have any, obviously, it must be gambling time of the year, winter, right? And a lot of requests for permits. Anyone have any questions or any issues in any consent agenda? If not, I guess I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Second by Maggie Bass. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay. Now we're at miscellaneous. Mitch, don't try to sneak out now. You got anything?
I'm good.
Okay. Patrick?
Nothing.
Kirby, you want to make anything?
I would like to address just real quick. Thank you, May.
Okay.
In regards to a couple of the comments made by Mr. McBroom and Berger.
Kirby, can you come to the microphone? Thank you.
I don't want to obviously go through the list and address everything that was said, but I do want to make sure that the board feels that the way I and Mayo Clinic as a whole has handled the opportunity to present the information has been appropriate. I've tried to direct all my appropriate questions to Mike and ask him for this time to present to you guys tonight and what that would entail. And then also, Mr. McBroom obviously has a long history in this community, and I don't. I'm not a native New Prague resident. I currently am, and I've appreciated being a part of this process. But if there are any concerns of the way that I've handled myself or our team has handled ourselves, please let us know. I know the open meeting law as well, and understand that discussion can occur outside of a quorum here, here, or other places. So please provide that feedback if any changes need to be made on how we address the council in whatever fashion that may be. The second thing I do want to say is, in your guys' thought process and research that you talked about, I don't want anything we're doing to restrict you guys from understanding what the service would look like. So if the request of the board, the council, would be to propose a tentative agreement, much like North Memorial has, we can make that happen at the request of the council. So if that's one thing that potentially would be a reason to re-sign with North rather than, and then look at a new agreement, please let me know. We can have that drafted. We talked about our model tonight, and so if that's at the request of the council or Mr. Johnson, we can do that, so you guys could compare apples to apples in terms of what an agreement might look like moving forward. And secondly, I would like to invite the council, as probably individuals, so there aren't any quorum challenges, to take a tour of the facility. Mike offered that to me as an opportunity to introduce some of the newer things going on at the medical center and some of our clinical service areas, some exciting projects that Dr. People mentioned that I think would be exciting for the council to see. I'm not sure if you guys have been to the medical center recently. Hopefully not, especially the emergency department. But I would love the opportunity to talk a little bit more about what the future of healthcare in New Prague looks like and some of the investments we've made over the last couple of years, just to further create a knowledge base, whether that helps or doesn't make a decision moving forward in terms of the ambulance services. I'd like to offer that, and we'll probably be following up with each of you individually to offer that. If not accepted, that's okay. I just want to give you guys the opportunity to better understand what it's like on a day-to-day basis here in New Prague within the medical center and our clinics. So that offer's on the table. I'll follow up with some invitations and try and accommodate your guys' schedules. But I again want to thank you guys for taking the time tonight. I know we went a little long, and thank you for the questions. And I absolutely respect every New Prague resident's opinions about the decision 10 years ago or even further with North Memorial Ambulance. So great comments about the relationship. We have a good relationship with North as well. Terry and his crew do a good job, and we don't want this to come in between that relationship, because the pre-hospital and hospital care is important, and communication remains a focus for us. So whatever decision you make, we're gonna continue to contribute to the well-being of our community and our residents, and anybody who accesses healthcare in New Prague. So thank you guys for the time, and I just wanted to mention a couple of those things. So I'll hopefully be reaching out, and maybe we can spend a little time together in the future. But let me know if I drafted agreement for ambulance services as well as the lease agreement for the ambulance garage is something you guys are interested in, okay?
Glenn, I'm sorry that Ron, I didn't know where he was going. I'm pretty lax on how I run a council meeting, you know, even though it wasn't a public forum meeting. So I apologize in the sense I didn't realize he was gonna, you know, I thought he had some comments on the ambulance EMS service, but, you know, you gotta go wrong with room to understand, but I guess I just want to let you know I'm sorry that it had to come out in this kind of form.
Sure. And if any of you have any concerns over the statements made, whether it's the validity or the efficacy of the statements, and want to provide me an opportunity to respond to some of those comments, I definitely can do that in the appropriate setting, but you see fit. But thank you for saying that. You know, a couple of those things. I wrote down a lot of notes. So a couple of those things definitely concern me in terms of validity and efficacy in what's really happened in the last decade or so. So just FYI, I can respond as you guys see fit, but if not, that's okay as well. Every citizen and member of this community and visitor here has the opportunity to speak. I'm a big freedom of speech fan. However, I hope to speak more in fact rather than in speculation, so. Thank you guys for the opportunity.
Definitely appreciate it. Thank you. Patrick, you didn't have anything to say? Okay. Glenn, fine. You're killing me tomorrow.
I just wanted to give you a...
Are you gonna get a police escort?
I am, yeah, probably. Just wanted to give you an update and apologize that you read about the biosolids fire in the paper and didn't hear it from us. I dropped the ball on that, so. But I'll give you an update on that. It is an insurance line. The biosolids storage area is the far west side of the wastewater plant. It's connected to the wastewater plant. That's where we store the bags of biosolids after it's dry. The biosolids has had a tendency of heating up. It gets a wet spot. It gets some material that's a little, not quite as dry as it's supposed to be, and it could be in the middle of the bag, it could be someplace in the bag. These bags are about eight feet tall, four feet round, hold about 1,500 pounds of material. It will actually start to heat from the inside and just get hotter and hotter. Actually kind of turn into almost like hard coal, if anybody's ever witnessed like a beef fire. It's like impossible to put out. It just holds its heat. You can't get the water into it. You basically gotta let it burn out. That's what happened there. It happened Sunday, January 12th. That's when it was found, 8:30 on Sunday morning. Got the insurance company involved. Claims adjuster came out and looked at it. At that point, the claims adjuster instructed me to get proposals from at least two companies to do cleaning of the inside of the biosolids building. They wanted to get an electrical engineer out just to verify or make sure it wasn't an electrical component that caused the fire. That has happened. That happened last Friday, so now I have instruction to get estimates of proposals to replace the electrical in the room. What's in the room is lighting, exhaust fans, heaters, outlets, CL detectors, and then one machine that was way on the far side from the fire, we're hoping no or very little damages happened to that. That's the bagging system. It's real simple system. You put four bags on. When one fills up, it just moves into the next one and just keeps going down the line and weighs the bags. We know what's in the bag, and we can set it so that it does switch over at like just under 1,500 pounds. So the next process for me is to start looking for contractors that are willing to work on the electrical, start replacing all those components. We did make contact with City Montgomery to take our bios, our sludge. They charge us the same thing we've ever charged them. We've taken theirs in times past. We've taken Northfield's in times past. You charge what it costs you to process the sludge. You're not making any money on it. It's kind of, we just do it for each other. So that's all set up. I've been in contact with John Peterson from Moldering Bank to discuss how do we try to prevent this? I think the obvious thing is you could put in a smoke detector. You could put in infrared readers. I'm not sure what the best way to do it is. But we really do need to look at something. So unless you got any questions, I won't take up any more of your time.
Yep. Glenn, do you replace all the electrical because even though it wasn't caused by electrical?
It got so hot in there, it melted everything.
They were damaged, then?
I'm sorry, yes.
It's not because the adjuster said to do it, okay?
No, they're damaged. They're just, they're melted.
You want to talk a little bit, that there is a separation between the garage and the rest of the plant? That's a concrete wall.
Yeah, it is. Yeah, there is. And there was no smoke damage anyplace else in the plant, even though it has a common wall to the processing end of the plant. But it was just contained in this room. It got hot.
So did that set it off? Is that something about...
So did that set it off, set some kind of alarm off or something?
No. No, the guy that came in on Saturday, Sunday morning to do his rounds, that's one of the first, that's one of the places they go, is into the biosolids room. And it sounds silly, but it's a common practice, and we need to improve on that practice. But they were doing everything the way they've been taught to do, is you can definitely tell just by the smell when a bag is starting to heat up or when it would start to smoke. And he said Saturday morning, there was no indication. So it's, this is never, we've gotten hot bags before. We've had occasions through the years that they'd walk in, they'd go, "Oh, I can smell something." They, we have a hand reader that they can shoot all the bags and find the one or two warm bags or hotter bags, and grab them with the forklift and get them out of there. It's always taking care of a problem. This is totally different, we've never experienced this before.
So you gotta look into solutions, excuse me, are you gonna look into solutions in them and bring that back to us?
We're gonna try, we're gonna try to find something foolproof. I'm not, I don't know if it's out there, but we're gonna try. Milwaukee and Sioux had a terrible time with fires, where they came to the point, they said, "We're done. We're not storing a drop of it, it's going straight to landfill, we're just done with fires." Checked with St. Peter, Nordfield, all those communities don't have the same problem as far as their biosolids getting warm, but they add lime to it. Theirs has so much metal to it that the only way they can land spread it by the PCA is if you mix it, I believe it's 40% lime and 60% biosolids, and the lime shuts it down, prevents, they don't even have to dry it quite as dry as we do, that prevents it from heating up. Nordville unfortunately is right now dealing with a situation through the lime mixing process. Something started on fire there, so they're down in production, because they had a fire because of the lime and biosolids. So I don't know, I don't know which animal's worse here. So, but it just blows me away that they never had any trouble till I just recently found out, that's why. They mix lime with it, take scare of that.
Glenn, I saw some video from one of the firemen over the weekend or last week, and that smoke was rolling out of there. Was the employee ever in danger, I mean, if he wasn't noticing that? Is that something we need to look at as far as whoever was doing rounds?
According to the employee, he knew it right away when he pulled in, because he could see the smoke rolling out of the building. So that's when he called 911.
But had he not, I mean, it looked like there was so much smoke, I mean, you could see where if you open up a door, you'd see it in there.
Yeah, yeah. We've never had this much smoke, we've never had this situation. This was totally unique to us. Of the years since this plant's been in production, that we've come onto a warm bag, or they've found one or two warm bags, never even close to this situation.
So the building was built without smoke detectors in that storage unit?
Yeah. Nobody can really tell me why, I wasn't involved with the process of building the building.
What the code required it?
Supposedly not.
That's just kind of unfeasible. That's a question to the engineer too, when you talk about...
Code didn't require it.
No, it didn't, okay. Right, but we're dealing with things that are combustible, you'd think it automatically...
I wouldn't even be here to argue with you or try to defend it. I asked the same question, why not? Would you be willing to spend extra time guarding it? Sure, you got a lot of money.
At a minimum, are we gonna put smoke detectors in?
I think that would be at the minimum. The problem with the smoke detectors is, I don't know if that's the true answer, because with this biosolids product, from what we experienced on January 12th, it obviously could get to the point so quickly that I don't know, you might be behind the eight ball by the time the smoke detector goes, "Ah."
Right, but it's still something, every different one side of the plant, and you're here, you know what's going on.
Well, yeah, but the thing of it is, is this, on weekends, the guys are only there for two to three hours, depending what they find, depending on their rounds. So he came in Saturday morning, and he found this on Sunday morning.
Maybe the thing to do, you said you had some sort of a heat detector, and there's only, I don't know how many bags.
There could be hundreds of them.
Okay, so you could just...
It'd be pretty time consuming, and that's what I talked about.
Comment, this smoke detector, if it sets off, should have an alarm loud enough, then you'd be able to hear it outside, and Mike said, "Oh, he could hear it."
Yeah, well, we could hook them up.
It's all on my cell.
Well, seriously, I mean, smoke detectors, you can hear it from blocks away.
Yeah, no, I totally agree with you.
Well, actually, to take it one step further, you have like a security system where that it just automatically calls 911.
I think you could assume...
Yeah, I mean, ours at home does too.
That the staff, in light of what occurred, is we will be talking with the community and brainstorming, what's the appropriate level of technology or other needs to address the situation that occurred.
I think you're right, smoke detectors are definitely something to look at, I'm just not sure it's the total answer for the older ones. So thank you.
All right, thank you for the update. Ken, Michael?
My section email, trying to look ahead, putting together the review, it's been very challenging, trying to find time for staff and you, but I think Wolf and I were back February 13th at 5:30 or 6:00 to be able to take a stab at going through the personnel policy.
I didn't answer yet, but you have a problem?
Yeah, I didn't hear from everybody.
Yeah, 13 works.
13, you want to do a 5:30 start so that we...
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Any emails?
No. Other than you need to sign the plat downstairs?
I told...
They'll do it tomorrow.
I told Ken I would do it tomorrow morning, or tomorrow at lunch. I didn't get the email till late in the day.
Okay.
Well, it's for quicker.
You have a quicker plat?
Oh, the plat?
The plat. Not a plat, you're not getting an award yet. Gar, do you have anything?
No.
Maggie?
No.
Sean?
Well, since I've not given a word from him, I have a quick question about, I had the Oriole, a couple members of the... New Prague Orioles, excuse me, that was nice call.
The Hasiel Orioles?
No, I don't think they're... The New Prague Orioles about with the change in the 3-2 going away, potentially going away, if there, we could look at the licensing aspect, but I don't have all the details on it, I couldn't remember off the top of my head, so if it's okay with you, can I call you tomorrow and discuss it a little bit? Okay. That was it.
Rick?
Nope.
Bruce?
Yep.
And the only thing I have is towards Zero Dev, I got a call from them wondering what we were planning to do, and I did reiterate, or talked to Rick about it, because in the November 4th minutes, Rick said he'd be willing to sit on a committee there with him. And I know Jim already is a layup on for that, so I'm gonna respond to them and just say that, you know, for our conversation on that night, and also reaffirming it, dah dah dah. And if they want some kind of city council involvement, you know, I'll work through you.
Yeah, let me know, and then, did you RSVP for...
Yep. So.
Councilmember Wolf is going to the league event here this coming Friday. The advanced training.
I like that, awesome.
I went to that one time, it's really cool.
So who went to the beginner's one?
No, I went to the advanced one in the last conference.
Oh, okay. If there's anything else?
You can approve of that.
Oh, good.
Not, I'll make a motion to adjourn. Yeah, the motion second, all in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposition? Okay, we're out of here, thank you everyone.